There it is, cloud talk. Along the way to cloud talk. Welcome, everybody. If you were a select board meeting for October 3rd, 2023, hope you enjoyed the full evening, right in. Tyler Ward. With me are Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor, fellow select board members. We have town administrator Paul McStay to my left and Ally Croy's assistant and town administrator taking our minutes this evening. And we'll be presenting part of this evening's agenda. You have Seth MacLean in the audience who has a PowerPoint from what I understand. He's the assistant town administrator and director of Park River. We are on air and taking great minutes. So if anybody has a question, we'd love to hear from you. Just please state your name for the record and for the seven people watching on podcast.
Nate here.
Nate Brown. Oh, and Nate is here. Great to see Nate. Okay. Our agenda this evening, Tim Dunn and Posse are here from NHDOT. I see several members from Royal Tanner Associates. This is affiliated with several bridge projects. Route 202 Bridge Replacement Project. We heard about this a while back and they have more information for us. That's the one up near Route 136 and Wilder Thermometer Park. State legislators.
Legislature, unfortunately.
Jonah Wheeler will be here. Palaja Vincent's going to come in and discuss potential for 250th anniversary of the great old USA when that happens. And then we'll hopefully vote to accept $10,000 for lead service grant. NHDS vote to accept $10,580 from Recreation Trails Program grant and vote to renew some pilot program with Scott Farrar. And then we'll get an update from Ally. That's where it is on charitable exemption of property recertifications. And then we'll consider a charitable tax exemption for Journeys and Education that we all know as the Mariposa Museum of the Year on Main Street. We also have minutes from September 5th to approve.
We'll also have one add in. We didn't make it on the agenda, but Seth is also going to give us his monthly update from the Fire Station Building Committee.
So that's the PowerPoint.
Yes, the PowerPoint.
Great. With that, Tim, welcome.
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce everybody with you?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, so I'm Tim Dunn. I'm a project manager with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Presenting with me today will be Aaron Lechance from HTA, who is the department's design firm for this project. So yeah, this is Peterborough 27712, replacement of the US 202 Bridge over the Kentucky River north of town. So quick overview, I already introduced myself and Aaron. The purpose of this meeting is a follow-up to the public officials meeting we attended back in March of 2001. We're going to present some findings that we've developed, updated and provide an update on project status and the schedule of the project. And then also we want to solicit any town, community stakeholder, public input on the project. So brief outline, we'll talk about the project purpose and need, what the existing conditions are out there, design considerations we have to account for, alternatives, and then environmental, historic, cultural resource considerations, schedule and funding questions. Sorry.
Actually, I apologize. Yeah, that can go on over 20 years. Don't do that.
Yeah. So yeah, so every department project has a purpose and need statement. And for this project, the purpose is to result in a long-term, cost-effective, safe and sustainable bridge that accommodates multimodal movement of bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorized vehicles over the Kentucky River. And the purpose is demonstrated by the deteriorating condition of the bridge and its inclusion on the state red list. And also that is a scour critical bridge on the state scour critical list as well.
Does this sound critical?
So a scour critical, I hit off. Essentially, there is the possibility of the water from the river undermining certain aspects of the structure. So we did a remediation project back in 2019, so you know, to lessen the chance of that, but it still remains on the list because it, you know, it could happen, but we've done a project. So cultural and historic resource consultation. So this is a summary of kind of what I'm going to read here. I'm going to read through it quickly. So if anyone has any questions about being a consulting party, please come and talk to me after the presentation. So as part of the National Environmental Policy Act and other state and federal regulations, the DOT must investigate the potential impacts that our projects will have on surrounding natural, cultural, and social environment. Identifying key resources early in the project development process enables the department to avoid or minimize impacts as the design proceeds. Part of the environmental review involves identifying historical resources in accordance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. The department and federal highway administration are reviewing the project area in consultation with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources to determine if there are any historical resources within the vicinity that would be impacted by the construction of this project. Historic properties can include buildings and structures 50 years old or older, as well as archaeological sites. In addition to age, it also must be determined if a structure maintains enough integrity to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Please note that Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act offers those that possess a direct interest in historical resources, including town officials and historical societies, an opportunity to become more involved in an advisory role during the project development as consulting parties. Those interested would need to indicate so in writing to the Federal Highway Administration. Please come see me after the meeting if you would like more information. We ask that if anyone has concerns with natural, cultural, or socio-economic resources within or adjacent to the project area, that they bring them to our attention tonight or get in touch with me as well. Oh, this button goes the wrong way. And so I guess with that, that's my brief introduction for the department. I'm going to hand it off to Aaron now, and he's going to talk more about the project specifics. And I'll be back at the end to wrap things up.
Excellent. Thanks, Tim. Although all that is very important information, I hope that is the least entertaining part of our presentation tonight. All right. So here's a location map of the project, the 27712. That's the DOT's numbering system for it. Located north of town, south of the high school, north of the hospital, and also north of the Main Street Bridge project, which some of you may recognize me from working with the town in a different capacity as a direct client for the town. That project, we're working for DOT here, but same knowledge, same team. So looking more closely at an overview of the project site, there's a lot going on here, and we're going to touch on most of these things and other parts of the presentation. But to give you an overview, subject bridges here, we have the 1836 North Village Dam just upstream, as well as on the western bank, the northwestern bank, the old Wilder Thermometer Factory Site, as well as Rotary Park. There's an old sluice way that serviced the factory historically, which has been partially filled, but some remnants remain in the northeast quadrant. There was a mercury remediation project completed in the northwest quadrant in 2007. We also have on the southeast quadrant, we have the 136 intersection, which is very close to the existing bridge, as well as a steep hillside, a few homes that are eligible for listing on the register, which we'll talk about. Also in the northeast quadrant, we have a canoe access and parking area and a wetlands mitigation site from a former DOT project. So we packed a lot of constraints into our project site. Oh, Nate didn't leave this out on purpose, the town sewer siphon with sewer structures, sewer siphon structures on each bank. So the dam immediately upstream, the sewer siphon immediately downstream, and we'll talk about why that's challenging for this project. To dive into a little bit more of what Tim was talking about in the cultural and historical resources that we consider in this project, starting with the bridge, it's old, but not eligible or historic. So that's what makes the project a little bit easier. In the North Village area as well is historic, but not eligible for listing itself as a district. The project area, we talked about the, in the northwest quadrant, the Wilder Thermometer Factory that has historic significance. In the northeast quadrant, I mentioned the former mills, Ellet Canal. In the southeast quadrant here, these are the two parcels that are eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, but they are not listed at this point. And we mentioned the dam, which is historic, but not listed as well. So looking more closely at what's going on in each of these quadrants from ground view, starting with the southeast quadrant, looking south from 136 towards the intersection. In the northeast quadrant, we see one of the sewer siphon structures that I mentioned. In the southeast quadrant, there's another sewer siphon structure down in this area. Can't quite see it from there. And then down here, this is that same sewer siphon structure here. So that sewer siphons located right next to those two wing walls on the downstream We talked a little bit about this canoe launch. So this is in the northeast quadrant. There's a gravel access road, as well as a path leading down to a cartop launch. We're going to talk a little bit more about how some of the alternatives impact this, but it's kind of belongs here with the early cultural and recreational resources considerations. In the northwest quadrant, looking more closely at the Rotary Park area and the remnants of the Wilder Thermometer Factory. This is a very nice little park that the town has created in this area. And just a few different photos of what's going on there. We can obviously see the bridge in the background and the proximity of the bridge to that area. And then we have the North Village Dam, a few different pictures we're going to refer to. The dam has two major components that we'll talk about, the spillway, which is the main portion of the dam that water normally flows over, and the abutments, those are the structures on either end of the spillway that anchor that structure into the banks. There's a southern bridge abutment, which is located close to the bridge. And we, the northern, I guess what we're calling south and north abutments, and the northern, which is closer to the Wilder Factory Site. And this is a really neat picture showing sort of origin of some of these historic things that we've been talking about. We have the old, I think I got this right, that this is the old sawmill structure for the Wilder Factory. This is the old factory itself. This is a bridge that used to exist at this location. We have the North Village Dam. I mentioned that outlet canal a few times, that's over here. And I think the alignment of the current bridge is kind of, you know, in this area. And in one of the quadrants, we, in archaeological consideration for the project, is the potential remnants from this former day house here. So a lot of history in this location. And kind of a summary here of all the things that we need to think about when we look at this rehab or replacement project. This top section just summarizes all the features I've talked about. But in addition to those site features, and we've got traffic control, environmental and cultural resources, hydraulics and scour that we talked about, right away, and construction access. And I think Tim started putting together this matrix of all these design considerations. And I think it's like 100 cells by 100 cells. It's crazy.
Yeah, it got quite large.
So some details on the existing bridge, it was originally constructed in '42, widened in '74. Tim mentioned the scour mitigation project that was completed in '19. It's 176 foot long, two-span curved steel girder bridge, 44-foot wide road, 12-foot lanes, two shoulders, there's a five-foot sidewalk on the upstream side. Handles around 7,000 vehicles per day, about 7% of those are trucks. And the important part here is the overall condition of the bridge is a four on the DOT or the NBIS National Bridge Rating Scale, or poor. And it's on the DOT's red list. It's number 17 out of the entire bridge inventory, and that's largely a condition-based ranking. So it's considered to be the combination of the worst condition, most important bridge kind of put together, it's number 17. So really important to do something with this structure. So the first thing, we always like to, if we can rehab a bridge, we will do it. It can be cost-effective, it can be the right solution. So we looked at that as our first alternative here. And even if we rehab the superstructure, new steel girders, concrete deck, this bridge would still remain on the red list because of the scour critical nature and what's going on with this substructure. So right off, that's a hit to rehab. Generally, when you rehab a bridge, the service life is going to be less than a complete replacement. And even though it might be a lower initial cost, it's, the lifecycle costs are going to be higher, and that initial cost could still be very high. It could be millions of dollars, it would be millions of dollars for the structure. So really big investment, plus those high long-term maintenance costs, plus we still have a scour critical bridge. So for all these reasons, we determined that bridge rehabilitation does not meet the project purpose and need. And we'll keep coming back to that project purpose and need that Tim read earlier, because it really guides our decision-making process. So if we're not going to rehabilitate, that drives us to evaluating replacement alternatives. And we have what we're calling three big picture alternatives, and they're kind of, they're a combination of where we locate the bridge and how we accommodate traffic. We'll look at the upstream shift, the downstream shift, and replacing in existing location, and really weighing heavily traffic control and site impacts in evaluating those alternatives. It may be hard to see, but there's a cool little graphic down here. This is a traffic analysis software package we use, it's called Synchro. I don't know if you picked up on that, Tim.
I did not, no.
So we've done a lot to evaluate traffic control and have really good informed information about how this construction project is going to affect things out there. So if we look at the upstream shift, the big picture goal here would be to stay away from everything on the downstream side, stay away from the sewer siphon, stay away from that 136 intersection, maintain traffic on the existing bridge, and then do what we can to build within that upstream kind of shift area. This alternative or this range of alternatives, because there's subalternatives, could include permanent over widening for traffic control. It also results in a wide range of potential impact to the North Village Dam. There's a few different alternatives that we examined, and the North Village Dam impacts are really important, we'll talk about that. The other, the downside to the upstream shift is, are the potential impacts to the Wilder Site and the Rotary Park, mercury contamination, those things that we looked at earlier. This is one of the alternatives that we considered, and this is really the most minimal upstream shift. And this is a colored graphic that shows a stage construction scenario where we're moving in a permanent condition, building more bridge on the upstream side, or shifting the bridge that we're going to build to accommodate traffic during construction. And even the most minimal shift ends up getting into the North Village Dam, into that southern abutment. And we've coordinated a lot with the DES Dam Bureau on this, and that's really guiding some of our decision-making. So as I mentioned, that upstream shift impacts that north abutment, and I showed you the minimal alternative, we had some alternatives that got into the spillway, so that middle portion upwards of 30 or 40 feet. And those were great for traffic control, but they weren't great for what we would have to do with the dam. So through that DES Dam Bureau coordination, we determined that any impact to that dam, even a slight adjustment to one of the, you know, edges of the dam abutments would require a dam upgrade or dam reconstruction permit. And the second that that permit is triggered, then is the need to upgrade the dam to meet all regulatory standards is triggered. So there are some things that are happening with the dam, and the town's been working with Stevens Associates since before 2016. I think the most current report I saw was 2016, but there were some recommendations where there are some upgrades necessary to bring that dam into regulatory compliance. So by touching that, this project would then be on the hook for doing those improvements, which, which may still be the right project for the department to put forward, but we don't know yet. So the conclusion here is an upstream shift that avoids major impacts. So maybe just getting into one of the dam abutments could be, could meet the purpose and need. I know that's wishy-washy language, but there's a wide range of alternatives. So we, an upstream shift is viable, depending on the scope, but we have more work to do, more investigation to do. Excuse me. My wife's a talker, so I don't get to talk at home, so I come out here and get really excited and talk a lot. Okay, so looking now, so if, if the opposite of the upstream shift is the downstream shift, let's see what that might entail. So the goal here would be to stay away from that North Village Dam and all of those challenges we just talked about, maintain traffic on the existing bridge in some fashion through stage construction, and see how that lays out. Now, the downfall here is that that gets into the town sewer siphon. So a sewer siphon, there's a very deep concrete structure on each end, and two sewer pipes that connect those structures underneath the river. So it converts a gravity system to a short section of pressure flow and then back out. It's a complicated system, it's expensive, and getting into it, it would create a challenge for the project. It might be feasible, but it's definitely a major consideration. The other major consideration for the downstream shift is getting into this Route 136 intersection. And we'll look at that here. That becomes challenging because of Old Street Road, and it's always hard to capture grade in a photo, but it's a very steep grade going up Old Street Road. You can see it in the right-hand photo as well. So moving that intersection in a permanent fashion closer to 136 is going to make the transition up Old Street Road more challenging, it's going to reduce the queue lengths along 136 where it 90s in. It may be feasible, but some challenges. So some amount of downstream shift could meet the purpose and need, provided the challenges we talked about could be addressed. So we looked upstream, we looked downstream, so how can we replace the bridge in its existing condition? Because it really does seem like, and Tim says this a lot, this bridge is where it needs to be. It, you know, it's situated between some very hard constraints. So how could we put the bridge back right there? And the goal of this in existing location relocation or reconstruction would be minimize or avoid impacts to the sewer, 136, North Village Dam, and Rotary Park. Can do that with complete closure, which is a detour, there's a state route, there's a local route. We looked at those, we talked about those at the last meeting. Neither one is feasible, well, I wouldn't say they're not feasible. We're not pursuing a detour enclosure. So if we can't do, can't close the bridge, how do we do phased construction in the existing location? The only way to do it is to maintain a single lane of traffic. Everyone in town, everyone in town knows what this looks like, we dealt with it on the Main Street Bridge during daytime closures, one-on-one at times. This is a generic photo that I found, but you know, you know what this looks like. It's, it's a lot of delay to the traveling public. It extends traffic or construction duration probably another season with all the associated costs. So how do we avoid that? Well, we can use a downstream temporary diversion bridge, which is what this graphic illustrates. So in this scenario, traffic would be completely diverted off the bridge and onto this temporary diversion bridge. This is great because we can minimize or avoid impacts to the sewer, Route 136, and the North Village Dam and Rotary Park. The next slide is, are the challenges, but this is looking like a pretty attractive We look at the, and this kind of rehashes some of the things we just talked about, but it has a reduced construction duration versus phased, less driver delay, and that's what this slide's all about. In the left-hand, these cells are looking at a one-way, two-way traffic scenario, so single lane of alternating, like I just showed you that image. And the takeaway here is that the delays are in the order of minutes. So 244 seconds, for example, for the southbound through movement, which is during the PM peak versus only perhaps 23 seconds for the temporary diversion bridge. So minutes versus seconds of delay. So for the traveling public, the diversion bridge is a really nice option. But challenges are cost. I mean, we, in rough numbers, that temporary diversion bridge is probably approaching a million dollars for the project, rough numbers. That's a big cost. There's environmental impacts, though they're temporary, to build temporary abutments to have this structure crossing the river. There will be temporary impacts to the canoe launch and that wetland mitigation parcel that we looked at earlier. Truck turning movements could be a challenge because of the narrow nature of the most efficient economically bridge that would fit here. So that truck turning movements are a big consideration. We've looked at a truck exclusion. It's feasible, but not preferred. The department has some recent experience with that on another project. And then there's Old Street Road. The challenge of the proximity of Old Street Road to that temporary bridge and traffic I had an Old Street Road slide. I guess I might, I might have lost it. So I'm just going to ad lib here about Old Street Road. We talked with the community here at the 2021 meeting about the temporary closure of Old Street Road during construction. That is preferred by the design team and the department for all alternatives. It really makes all the traffic control alternatives through the project much simpler. That was viewed favorably, I'd say, from the community at that meeting. And I guess we're looking for more feedback on that to make sure that that opinion hasn't changed. And if it hasn't, we'll be cooperating with that.
Just to clarify, it's a partial closure of Old Street Road, just a permanent drive?
Correct, just the entrance here into Old Street Road would be.
To the traffic.
Important clarification.
Yeah, and so if I could jump in here, and I haven't been in touch with the hospital, and they didn't have any concerns with changing the access to Old Street Road.
So it would just be essentially closing that end of, that one entrance of Old Street Road. It would still be open to local traffic, so you know, or not through, but the people who live in the homes right at that end would be able to get to it from a permanent drive.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. One thing, I know I'm going to backtrack a bit. I want to talk about the sewer siphon for a second. I'm not sure what the best slide is. Tim reminded me that any alternative we look at may impact the sewer siphon. I don't want to say that we can't avoid it completely, but the alternatives that don't maintain traffic on the existing bridge during construction have significant less impacts, and they may be as simple as removing riser structures on those concrete inlet and outlet structures, maybe temporarily plating things and building around it. We're not looking at a siphon relocation like we would be in some of the all more extreme alternatives, so.
So if my toilet doesn't flush, I know we're blamed.
You do, talk to Nate.
You're significantly outdone from there.
All right. So we were working through the diversion bridge, Old Street Road, and then we're back on natural resource considerations. So it's near the end of my presentation, but it's by far not the least important. It's just probably the easiest for us to figure out with this project. We'll have environmental permitting through New Hampshire DES, wetlands, and shoreline permits as required for both temporary and permanent impacts. We'll look at all of the threatened endangered species and that sort of coordination. State coordination with New Hampshire Fish and Game, federal coordination with US Fish and Wildlife Service. We'll look at hydraulics and the floodplain stuff, making sure we're not negatively impacting the 100-year water surface elevations, FEMA-type considerations. And then as far as like stormwater treatment and those sort of things, really too early to be talking about those things, but I can say that we'll comply with the relevant standards as best we can as we get into the next phase of design. So the known unknowns, I guess I kind of touched on this a little bit, but we looked at truck turning movements, and from the department's perspective, that's a challenge, but would restricting some movements be acceptable to the community, to the trucking industry? Those are, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to gather that information, but it's a known unknown. What are the scale of the dam impacts and what would DES's opinion be on those? We came away from a meeting with the Dam Bureau a few years ago with somewhat different understandings internally of what might be acceptable, so we need to go back and talk to the Dam Bureau if we're looking at one of the upstream shift alternatives and find out, you know, could we reconstruct an abutment and not be on the hook for reconstructing the entire dam, just doing some of the minimal improvements? Is full pedestrian accommodation during construction required? Tim and I were talking before the meeting about, you know, how long the run of sidewalk is between downtown and the bridge, and how long it extends beyond high school. So, you know, could pedestrians be accommodated a different way during construction or not at all? I'm not sure. How do we balance the permanent versus temporary recreational impacts of the 4F parcels? So 4F is a parcel that was purchased with federal dollars or dollars of that nature and used for public use. So the Rotary Park is a 4F parcel on one side, the boat launch facility is a 4F parcel on the other side. You know, balancing temporary permanent impacts on both of those. And then sewer siphon is complete avoidance possible? Probably not, but we can likely avoid complete replacement or relocation.
Depending on which alternative we end up going with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Some of the alternatives avoid complete relocations is a better way to put it. So this shows a graphic of what a replacement bridge in the same footprint as the existing bridge would look like. We think regardless of the approach that we take, it's going to look something like this. There's no room to put it really significantly further up or downstream. So even though this is generally an online depiction, it's, it could encompass, it's encompassing several of the alternatives. And then in elevation view, or some, I guess some bridge details, we'd be looking at a bridge about the same length, 173-foot long, curved steel girder bridge, a 44-foot curve-to-curve width, plus a six-foot sidewalk, same, located on the same side of the road, a concrete deck with steel bridge rail, nothing fancy there. The horizontal and vertical roadway alignments generally would match existing, and we're still looking at what we're doing with substructure. But as far as the traveling public goes and impacts, there's nothing really to report there.
Can you just kind of explain the little diagram?
Yes. So down here, we have what's called a longitudinal view, so as if you're standing in the river downstream, looking up at the bridge. The important thing here is that we're looking at a single-span structure. So removing the existing center pier that supports the bridge now, that's a big part of that scour critical designation. So getting that, that substructure component out of the river, that has some environmental benefits and some hydraulic benefits, as well as it makes construction certain, certainly the alternative, construction is certainly the alternative is easier, given that we don't have to construct a pier in the middle. So is that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So where we are, we're taking all this into consideration. I mean, this is a lot, it's a big matrix of things to consider, and we have developed and delivered to the department a drafts, a draft alternatives analysis report that's being reviewed. We have ongoing agency coordination to satisfy the federal NEPA, as well as with cultural resources, this coordination, taking this, any feedback we get here back. And then hopefully coming up with a decision that everyone enjoys and can get on board with, and then moving into preliminary design, which is the more into preliminary design, which is the more conventional design, you know, actually just sizing elements and starting that permitting process. And I think this is where I turn over to Tim.
Yep, this is, I get the fun part right here, talking about who's spending what money. So as part of the alternative analysis that HTA has given to the department, we have a very rough project cost estimate of between $10 and $20 million. This is going to be refined as we start eliminating possible alternatives, or, yep, and, or if we pick up, when we pick a preferred alternative. The other thing that I want to mention here, because I don't want it to be a surprise later, is the town has both that sewer siphon right next to the bridge and has a water line on the bridge, and so because the, those utilities are within the roadway right away, those would need to be relocated, and there are some state laws which govern who pays for what. So the town would be responsible for the engineering of any changes or replacements, and the materials, while the department would be responsible for paying for the trench and backfill costs, and technically the reimbursement for the book value of the facility, which is the original cost minus the depreciation. So there will be a cost to the town with this project, but specifically to the utilities involved. And the schedule, so our goal is to finalize the alternative analysis this fall, move into preliminary plans in winter of 2024, early 2024, and then we will be coming out to the public for a couple more meetings. We'll have a public informational meeting, hopefully in the spring of 2024, where we will present our preferred alternative, and then have a public hearing in the summer of 2024. Wrapping up all of preliminary design is NEPA approval, and hopefully that will happen in fall of 2024. We move into final design, where we actually package up everything so it can be bid and do all the quantities. So that'll take a couple of years. And then construction, what we are planning on at the moment is construction during 2027 and 2028. This is, depending on which alternative gets chosen, and how long the construction's going to take in phase construction, and so there are a whole lot of things still in it, but this is what is roughly planned on for right now. So what we'd really like to get is anybody's feedback here, the town, the community, individuals. These are some of the things that we have identified that are always good on every project for us to try and get feedback on, so emergency response routes and mutual aid, school bus routes, both of the schools are just north of the project, any historic concerns, and Aaron mentioned a few of the noted historic parcels and districts and stuff, past flooding concerns, bicycle and pedestrian concerns, any local events, town utility upgrades, sewer, water, dam, and just any other concerns or thoughts that anybody has. The more information we can get, the, hopefully the better a project we can make. Granted, it's a pretty constrained site, so they're, we're limited on what we can do, but we certainly want to hear what everybody has to say. So I think, yep, so with that, that's the end of our presentation. If I could jump back, I actually have a couple of questions, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I was wondering if the town had any plans for the, for the North Village Dam in mind at the moment, or if it was just going to continue as it was for the time being? And if there's no answer at the moment, that's fine. That's just one question I have. And then the other question I have is regarding pedestrians along there and the sidewalk that exists. So our plan right now is to perpetuate that sidewalk through any of these alternatives that we talked about, so we could accommodate pedestrian traffic. If we didn't have to accommodate pedestrian traffic, it would make our phasing a lot easier. So it's something that we want to inquire about and just, you know, gather all the information that we can.
Sure.
Thank you, Aaron. The department has been appreciated. Thanks for, on behalf of the staff, I'd say thank you for coming to the town and getting out in front of this a bit. It helps us to help you plan a good project. There's obviously a lot of considerations. Your question about the North Village Dam, I can address that. We don't have it in our current capital plan. We had, as you alluded to, an evaluation done last in 2016, gave us some rough cost estimates. At the time, the town chose not to move forward on incorporating that into any capital plans at this time, being nonhazard and really not of a critical nature, where other projects needed to take precedent. With that said, like I said, we did evaluate it, and we are currently working with Stevens Associates on another dam here closer to downtown.
Yeah, yeah.
And depending on the nature of how this goes, certainly we could reengage there and determine what makes sense.
Okay, yeah, and that's kind of where I thought things were, and so I think that, you know, obviously, we will be in touch going forward about it. I think that's the best way to go about it at the moment, so. Aaron, looks like you're getting ready to do some CAD work.
Yeah, no, that's not me. Or anyone comment on the desire to keep the dam, because we have received a question a fair amount, hey, this project would be a lot easier if you could just take the dam out.
Yeah, and I should say, those questions are coming from other people inside the department.
Sure. Okay. There has never been a push to remove that dam. It is obviously aesthetically very attractive. It is adjacent to a park and is a feature of that park. The dam is used recreationally, as I was commenting before the meeting started, there's fly fishing that takes place out there. People really like that. And also, we, anecdotally, we believe that the dam is helpful for the recharge of our production wells, which are just a bit upstream from there, but we don't, we can't say that definitively until we complete the study that's currently underway, that's going to help us really map all of that out.
Okay.
But, you know, there is, there is definitely, has always been a desire to maintain a dam there.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that, you know, the aesthetic nature of it right there by the park, it plays into some of those other cultural things that we talked about.
And historic, certainly.
Right, and it was noted on the study for the downtown bridge.
Yes.
As a significant historic feature. I think they found five dams, five or six dams within town that were historic in nature.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I guess now that I'm going to open it up for questions, I guess I'd like to open, to open up to the select board first, if you have any questions for us about the project.
So '27, '28, obviously you've been monitoring this, and it number down, down or up to number 17? How would you?
So it, down, I don't remember what it started out, but it has moved a couple of places lower, right, closer to zero, I guess I would say.
Since what time did it move closer?
I do not know.
How many years have passed?
I can, we can certainly look at all of the past 10-year, or not 10-year plan, all the past state list bridge, state red list bridge reports, and kind of pull together a timeline for that. Since you brought it up, I'd like to clarify some stuff about the state red list. It's not saying that any bridge is unsafe. The main thing is that we've noted that these bridges have deteriorated a significant amount because mainly of their age, and so they require extra attention. And so a bridge that is not on the red list gets inspected once every two years, a bridge that is on the red list gets inspected twice every year, so four times more inspections. And obviously, if anything did come up with this bridge that made it unsafe, we would close that bridge.
Sure. Okay, fair. And then you asked about pedestrians. I personally don't bike or walk across that bridge, but I always see people crossing.
Okay.
It's heavily trafficked with bicycles, and I think in one of your pictures, someone's taken a picture of the dam.
That was, that was their drone pilot. But no, that's very good, all these anecdotal things we would like to hear.
People to use it, but also there is hot road, and there's a walking trail that we have, it's on, just on the other side of the river, so it's a possible pedestrian bicycle detour that will get them into and out of downtown.
Okay.
But it does bypass, you know, the rest of Route 2-2 down to the Main Street Bridge, so.
Hmm, okay.
Not exactly an easy detour, you know, for pedestrians and bicyclists.
It's like a dirt trail, or?
No, no, it's hard path.
Okay.
You know, and it does exist, but it's not exactly the most direct route into town if people are looking for a direct route.
Sure.
Anybody else on board before?
I was just, if that, if the pedestrian thing was the only thing stopping it from being a shift towards the dam, which in my estimation, and I'm not a bridge expert, although it seems like every bridge anywhere near me has been rebuilt pretty recently, that shift, and then, then you'd have to fix that end of the dam, so that'd be better for us anyway, so it seems like a northern, or that shift is, I mean, it's probably your favorite option at this point, too, isn't it?
Um, they all have pluses and minuses, honestly, yeah, we're, it's, it's hard. We are required to balance all of these different things, right? Cultural, historic, pedestrians, cost, natural impact, natural resource impacts. And so we develop these alternative matrices, and not everything has this equivalent impact, so it's, it's hard to really note which one is, is better or worse than the other. Where we're really trying to get to right now, and some of our fine tuning at the moment is really trying to decide which of these alternatives do or do not meet that purpose and need. Right now, Aaron said that there are a few that could meet the purpose and need. We're working to narrow those down and either get them on the list or get them off the list, and that, then we'll have a better idea of what we're really working with, what possibilities we have.
You mentioned a rough budget of 10 to 20 million, which is what, you might as well be 10 to 15, so such a wide range. Do you have any kind of estimate of what the town will be on the hook for if you had to redo the, what its utilities under the bridge and then also the sewer?
Sewer siphon?
Yeah, you talking about 500,000 or 6 million? I mean.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think 6 million, no.
I just wanted to make.
Because then you're not changing the brick.
Because I think they're functioning quite fine.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Where they are as they are.
Yes. I don't believe we necessarily have a cost for that at the moment. We just know that that's, that, you know, that would be a severe impact to the town and also a major financial consideration as part of the project. So even though a lot of the cost of replacing, well, the water line is kind of a net neutral, right? On any of these alternatives, the water line's going to need to be adjusted. The sewer siphon is the one where we may be able to avoid it, or we may not be able to avoid it, and we do account for kind of the total project cost, even if the cost was borne by the town, we still look at that in our decision-making, so it's not, we don't just look at the costs borne by the department, by the state. Yep.
Anything else from the board? No? Okay to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Tim or Aaron? Who was first?
I don't know.
How soon was the, or how recently was the traffic flow count done? And is there a trend to increase traffic or decrease traffic? My anecdotal view is that there's a lot of traffic there. I don't know what the numbers are.
I will push that over to Aaron, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm a bridge person, not highway person, but I am the PM, so I should know this. When we initiated this project, it was, it was basically in the heart of COVID, so the, the traffic, if we were to collect new traffic data, it wouldn't have been very good, so we collected some historic traffic data from the Regional Planning Commission, and I believe it's, it might be 2018 or earlier. We can get back to the board and have that answer published, but I can tell you it's not 2023 traffic data.
That, that would be important, I think.
Yes.
For some reason, it just feels like, and again.
So the department in general, not necessarily for this project, but really across the whole state, we are able to look at regional traffic and growth or decline, and so we can apply, you know, annual factors and regional factors to estimate what traffic is doing, and so that's what we've done in developing this project. I don't, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but that is a standard for the department to do, if we don't have current, you know, this year traffic data.
I'm going to piggyback on that. The, the bridge does seem certainly wide enough, so it could be replacing kind, or what are, what are the data for traffic accidents?
That is a great question, and I don't know, but I can certainly look that up and get back to the board about that.
Carl, you have a question?
That is a good question, yeah.
Thank you, Charlie, I'm Carl Mabzino. Don't have a question, but you asked for feedback.
Absolutely.
I probably, more than anybody else in this room, which is a small room, use that intersection from Old Street onto 202.
Yeah.
And it is absolutely no problem to cut that off. Normally is fine.
Okay, that's fantastic, yeah, that makes our life a lot easier in terms of constructability.
I feel like they've, they've actually asked people on that road, or asked to have that closed off.
It is quite steep, and I have heard anecdotally that it kind of gets officially or unofficially closed in the wintertime when it gets really snowy and icy, so.
People certainly know to avoid.
I can understand why.
We do maintain it.
Yeah.
It is well-maintained, I never, never have to skip it.
Yep.
Back, back to the dam. I know there's a movement around the state where a lot of towns are removing dams for environmental reasons, and I'm wondering if the, if, like, what if that down-the-road PBR were to decide that's something we need to do, would we be hemmed in by the bridge that we choose to build? In other words, would we, like, by removing the dam, we're going to destroy the footings or something like that?
You know, that is an interesting question. I don't know as if we've looked into that scenario per se.
I can speak to that a little bit, so I worked on the Main Street Bridge project for a lot of years, and we modified the transcript dam as part of that project to create real estate for the shift on Route 202, and the most important detail of that dam work was that the dam had to be structurally independent from the rest of the retaining wall, or else the rest of the retaining wall became a dam and that was no longer low hazard, so I would say if that scenario happened where some work was done, even if that scenario didn't happen, the bridge must be structurally independent from the dam and cannot be impacted by anything that happens with the dam, so. I don't have the details to say how we would do it, but that they would, this scenario you described would not happen. Yeah, and it wouldn't change the water flow to the point where, oh no, now our bridge is going to just be destroyed or something like that. Yes, got it.
So Tim, you said you were having conversations with the school district as well?
So I had reached out and invited them to this meeting, and I had, they didn't attend, so I'm going to reach out to them directly and, and make a point of contact with them.
Contact information.
Uh, yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Ron? Ron McIntyre, want to go back to the question of whether there's going to be a pedestrian walkway across the new bridge?
Well, so let me, let me, if I could, just real quick, the new bridge will absolutely have a sidewalk.
But temporarily.
Correct.
I'm talking about temporarily. If there is no pedestrian walkway, aren't, I would think that people are still going to cross the bridge by foot, and bicyclists are going to want to cross the bridge.
Yep.
And in that eventuality, where does liability fit in?
So what I, my answer to that is, the, the question about the sidewalk is mainly, are there users of it? There, there are locations in the state where there are sidewalks and there quite literally are no users. So we would set a really, really high bar in order to, for us to be able to not have a sidewalk during construction at all times. So if there are users of it, we plan on perpetuating that sidewalk. And then in terms of cyclists, I think it really depends on what type of cyclist we have out there, right? If it's a very recreational cyclist and then they are just kind of, you know, wheeling along the sidewalk, they, they would be able to use the, the one on the temporary bridge or on part of the phase construction, and then if it were a more, not recreational cyclist, more of a serious cyclist, that's not really the best word for it, but they're going to be riding in the, in the lane anyway, so. Where that becomes more complicated is if we do phased construction with just one lane of traffic, we'll have to set up the temporary signals so that it can detect cyclists, and we'll have to plan the, the cycle length, you know, the green, yellow, red to accommodate them crossing through the work zone.
Would that be grant funding for the town's portion of the infrastructure improvements we'd have, be on the hook for?
I do not know. I can, I can certainly ask and get back to you.
Anyone else? Great, we had a great presentation.
Excellent, thank you very much for having us.
Yeah. All right, that's great. I think it was awesome. Check stuffs.
I can tell you that right now? No. No.
All right. Thanks, guys. All right, up next, we have, we're going to hear from Joe Wheeler, our state legislature, about the upcoming year, the sole presentation. Everybody else skipped out, I'm welcome.
You got PowerPoint?
I don't, unfortunately. I should have, though, I, not realizing that we have this new PowerPoint. Yes, so I'm.
Let me introduce you.
Okay, sure.
I think everyone knows, Joe is our representative from the town PBR here, or District, what?
33.
33, okay. And we've, we had invited our three reps, the Senator from Donovan, and his counterpart, Peter Leishman, to join us this evening to talk about the legislative session 2022, and our upcoming 23, 24. Yes, so I'm.
Let me introduce you.
Okay, sure.
I think everyone knows that Jonah is our representative from the town of PBR here. District what?
33.
33. Okay. And we've, we had invited our three reps, the Senator from Donovan, and his counterpart, Peter Leishman, to join us this evening to talk about the legislative session 2022 and your upcoming 2324 session, to give us an update on what's going on there. Unfortunately, Peter is away, not on a vacation, I think it's business trip, and unfortunately, Donovan is ill. So you're on the hook tonight, because you don't have to come back when the round comes.
Good. Well, I'm happy to be here and to give a little bit of an update about what we've been doing in the State House and the work that's gone on since about November of last year, when, I mean, it was November 17th, and from that day on, it's been a fire hose of information, going up to Concord, doing the caucus meeting, doing committee preparation, getting ready for Organization Day. It has been a real learning experience, to say the least. And for some reason or the other, I was put on Criminal Justice, thankfully, and it was not expected as a freshman. That's one of the Blue Chip Committee, it's one of the busier committees that deals with a lot of the bills that get before the House. I think we're the second busiest this year with 60, 65 some odd bills, but second busiest to education with 120. So we, well, lucked out on that end. They were there five days a week, we were only there three, four days a week from January to June. I don't know if they were trying to kill me by fire hose, but I really enjoyed the learning experience of being on the Criminal Justice Committee. Eight-hour-long public hearing sessions where people would come and bring their full selves to the testimony. That's part of what got me interested in the legislature in the first place, was going and testifying myself before the Criminal Justice, Education, and other committees. And seeing, being on the other side of that and seeing people bring their full story to the legislature made it clear that we do need people on that other side who can represent the perspectives of those people. And that's why I ran. That's what I do in the legislature. And we've worked on so many things that I know I will forget some, but it's, one of the things that I can say that has been good is the legislature, after many terms of being vitriolic and hateful in many ways, the Criminal Justice Committee, the majority party, the Republicans, in the 2020 to 2022 session, did not let the Democrats speak. They would speak over them, they would, it was a real chaos run by a man who is now state senator. So failing upwards, of course, as happens in our system these days. But this year, I can say with pride that because of, I think in many ways, the tie that we had in the legislature, for those of you who are not aware, there's 400 seats in the New Hampshire Legislature, and right now, at the election, the composition was 201 to 197, 201 Republicans to 197 Democrats. And as of now, because of some resignations and some health failures and people having to resign for those reasons and special elections that have happened, the composition, if I'm not mistaken, although, Bill, you might know better than I don't know, but it changes every day, it seems like. So it's, I think today it's 198 to 197 with Democrats, with three people either being independent or undeclared for some reason or the other. But two of those people were former Democrats and are likely to vote with the party still, and one of them was a Republican and is likely to vote with the party as well.
It's really important to show up and vote, too.
And that was what I was just about to get to, actually. A lot of the floor sessions that we've had, because of that, makes it so the majority party is all up to attendance. So we, as Democrats, even though in the beginning of the session, we didn't officially have the majority, there were a number of days where on the floor, we had the most votes because Democrats showed up, we sat in our seats, we stayed in our seats and voted the way that we were supposed to, and we were able to get some bad legislation stopped and some good legislation to the Senate. We were able to pass a ban on racial profiling by one vote, with one Democrat voting against it and four Republicans voting for it. We were able to pass and stop a bill that, Medicaid expansion, which came out of the Senate surprisingly, in my opinion, 20 to zero unanimously, but came to the House and was the biggest fight that happened this session in many ways. Finance was dealing with it until the very last moment, and then it was put into the budget, and Republicans tried to put forward, I think, 32 amendments to the bill, and they kept us there for a long time, speaking about every amendment, trying to pass just one of them, so that Medicaid expansion would go to a committee of conference, and much of what was passed in the Senate would be repealed, and much of what we have with, in terms of healthcare, for tens of thousands of people who wouldn't have it otherwise, would be gone. Luckily, because of our ability as Democrats to stay in our seats and our energized, passionate membership, we were able to protect Medicaid expansion and a lot of other things. On the Criminal Justice Committee, I mean, we've dealt with many issues, and that bipartisanship has not just been us being nice to each other, we've actually, as a result of actually speaking to one another, actually building relationships between the 10 Democrats on the committee and the 10 Republicans, have been able to come to a consensus on things like, we, in the beginning of the session, heard testimony from prisoners in the county jails, female prisoners in the county jails of horrific testimony of these people being provided linen sheets and underwear that had been stained, bloodstained, soaked, and this is provided as their clothing, with a lack of real menstrual products being afforded to them in the county jails. And all of us on the committee were horrified to hear the testimony of these women and immediately became very passionate about coming to some sort of solution. And we were able to pass that bill, and as far as I know, that's been signed by Governor Sununu. And it's things like that that prove to me that when we bring people and they share their firsthand experience, when we build relationships with one another on the committee, that things can get done. And I could go on for hours about the things that we did on the Criminal Justice Committee, the things that came before us in the full House. What I will just say, and I'll open it up mostly for questions, what I will just say to end is, it has been an honor to serve in the legislature. 100 years ago, if that, 100 years ago, I would not be allowed to serve in that building. And every time I step into the House chamber, which if you have not had the opportunity to take one of the tours, I definitely urge you to, it's the oldest legislature still in use, that building was built in 1819, and people have been making laws there for the state of New Hampshire and the people in it since that time. And so I think every time I sit in my seat, section 4, seat 48, that I, it takes, I get taken aback because it is an honor not just to serve the town in which I grew up in, but also to represent people across this state who have never had representation like myself. And I would just, I just know that if I was on the other side, that that would mean a lot. And having a voice of someone who, in many ways, has gone through firsthand the experience of most of the working-class people here in our state, having that voice on the committee, I think, has been a real benefit on so many different issues here in the legislature. So as much time as I have there, I will go as much as I can and spend as much time as I can, every waking hour is thinking about the State House. It has been an honor, and I will do that as much as I'm allowed to be here. So thank you very much. I'll answer any questions that I can about the next two years. Oh, actually, false, false end. I mean, I should mention a little bit as we're going into this next session, what I've been up to these last few weeks has been serving on subcommittees that have to do with the parole system, studying the parole system and its effects, because we've been seeing news clips of 61% of prison admissions are due to parole violations. That means people on parole who are caught using opioids, that means people who are shoplifting. By and large, that's what these parole violators are doing, and that is lending them back in prison, and that is accounting for 61% of our admissions. And we, in this state, not only can't afford to have an overflow of incarcerated people, it's a moral hazard to have that as our incarceration system. And a lot of this, these policies were put in place in the national sweep of private prison legislation that was put in during the Ronald Reagan administration. And I think there is, again, bipartisan consensus, whether it's to the parole system or reforming the bail system, to actually get something done so that we're not in a situation in which people who should not be in prison are being put in prison. And there's not a situation in which the technology of our state, how each court system communicates with the law enforcement officer, with the attorney, with the bail commissioner, is stuck in the 80s or the 70s. They're using paper material right now. What happens in Carroll County often is not known in Hillsborough, and that is causing a shift where people are being picked up eight times a night, where people are being, and you're hearing a lot of this from the Republicans, catch and release, catch and release, and they want to strengthen the incarceration system and put more people in jail as a result of the failures from the policies that they helped put in place over the last 40 years, instead of actually addressing the symptoms of that issue and reforming the system, making it so we are at least in the 20th century when it comes to our technology here in our state. And luckily, we have on that subcommittee a full passion from both sides of the aisle to getting some money, to improving the technology in our state and other things. And I have proposed to the full House a number of legislation this year, for me, most importantly, banning hair-based discrimination in our state. Many of you might have heard of the Crown Act, which has been passed in other states. People in states where this bill does not exist, which includes New Hampshire, can be fired for what their hair looks like. And that is not a situation in which we should be living, and that's not justice. And as someone who was fired from a job because of my hair, I'm very passionate about passing this bill, and I have been running around the state, meeting with hair professionals, and the woman who does my hair knows a lot of people, and there are black churches here in the state, people are ready for this bill to be passed. It was tried in 2018 and failed in committee, but I'm confident in this year that there's a tie that we will be able to pass that legislation. Another one that I'm very passionate about is a bill to annul the crime of anyone who had committed a crime that had no longer been on the books. So say we legalize marijuana, the Justice Department would have to go through and annul the records of anyone who was arrested for a marijuana crime, solely a marijuana crime. No one should be, and I have, when you're looking at the national stories of all these other states legalizing marijuana, I think, sure, that's a good thing, but if you look at the fine print, many people are still in Colorado, in California, across the country, still in prison for marijuana charges in states where people are growing, selling, and smoking marijuana. And that's an absurd situation, that if we want to legalize marijuana here in the state, should not be happening, so I am going to push very hard for that, and I, as far as I know, think I have some Republican cosponsors on that bill. There's a number of other bills, they will all be on my website, and there is a tracker there. I've started to update that as I've had time in this fall. But again, this has been an honor of a lifetime, a learning experience of a lifetime, and I just really appreciate the chance to be able to get to serve you in the legislature. So I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Jonah. I'm so grateful for your giving your time and the work you're doing. Anybody have any questions for Jonah? See there?
I aced it.
Do you expect, Jonah, do you expect that the upcoming session will be as amicable as the last? Has anything changed?
I do not expect it to be as bipartisan as the last session for a number of reasons. The Republicans in this last term, again, they had 201 when the election happened. There has been a number, and Bill, I'm sure you're very much so aware of this, of people who the Attorney General on their side had been investigating for most of the session, one of them being Troy Marner, who did not live in the district. In fact, he lived halfway across the state in a different district while he was serving the district that he was elected to. And had he not, had he adhered to the Constitution and resigned his seat saying that I am no longer serving in that district, which is what you're supposed to do, which is what many people in the past have done, then the Democrat who got third place would have won, and it would have been 200-200. On top of that, Lori Sanborn, the wife of Andy Sanborn, who I'm sure some of us remember his signs, I remember his signs from when I was a kid, from running for Senate and Congress and other things. She and her husband have a charitable gaming company or organization, they are, they work with, in the charitable gaming industry, and had gotten $800,000 worth of the COVID loan from the federal government, and used that $800,000 to buy him and hers Ferraris with taxpayer money. And she, as a result of this, gets put on the Charitable Gaming Commission, but not just put on the commission, made Chair of the Commission. So the corruption in the legislature has revealed itself as a little bit more absurd and corrupt than I think most people expected. And unfortunately, there had been reporting that the Democratic Party was somewhat aware of some of these things in the past. And I can tell you that as someone who saw the legislature for a number of sessions before running, part of the reason I ran is because I think that most times, with all due respect to the Democrats, they can be a little bit milquetoast and not mention things that should be mentioned, including Lori Sanborn, Troy Marner, some of the legislation that was passed, not be as full-throated in their fight. I'll tell you, the Republicans, they don't care at this moment, most of them, about the institution, and I think we're seeing that in Congress. On my drive here, I was listening to the vote in the National Congress where they just ousted Kevin McCarthy. This is an interesting moment in the history of our republic. The Democrats can't afford to be milquetoast, and I think that I've been passionate in caucus and passionate as much as I can in the legislature to push leadership to be more passionate and let people know about this. But I think it will be a little bit more of a contentious season as a result of some Twitter exchanges and the corrupt nature of the Republicans.
We should mention that Lori Sanborn has stepped down from that position.
She has, she has, and there are calls for her to resign from the House as well.
They have the word allegedly here and there.
Yeah, allegedly. Mis-truths and misrepresentations and everything, yeah.
Thank you, Jonah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any more questions for Jonah? Great. All right. Yeah, thanks for your time.
All right. Thanks, buddy.
I do have to mention, last thing, because I promised Peter I would. If nothing else, Peter Leishman has been, and I don't think he gets enough praise for this, really, he, as Chair of Finance One in the House of Representatives, has been one of the most active, engaged, and thoughtful representatives that I've seen out of all 400. And I say that mostly because he's my ride to the legislature. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. But we do drive together on session days, which has been.
You don't take the rails?
No, unfortunately not. One day, when the rails took conquered again. But no, but he has, but I say that in all honesty. He has been one of the most wise people, caring people that I have met throughout the legislature, who has a harrowing story himself and is not up there to just sit in the seat and press a button. He's been up there for the last 26 years, which is also hard to imagine, given that I'm only 20, but he's been up there for the last 26 years, fighting as hard as he But he's been up there for the last 26 years, fighting as hard as he can for the people of our state. And it's been a pleasure getting to serve with Peter Leishman as well. And I wouldn't be half as near where I am without his guidance. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonah. We'll stick around because we have someone who's so optimistic about the country, we may be planning a 250th anniversary. There's something light on the horizon. Palaja, welcome.
Thank you.
What do you think?
Well, honestly, I'm not quite sure. I didn't come prepared for a discussion of any note, so you don't have to worry about clapping for me. But I was, my goal is to start, and I think we're already a little behind, if you will, to start putting together our country's 250th anniversary. I think the Greater Peterborough has done incredible celebrations in the past, and I think this one should not just be as equal, but, you know, just be even greater than what we've done in the past. And I think we should be starting the organizing of everything, we should have a committee. So I'm bringing it to the table. I know how to do this kind of stuff, but I certainly didn't want to go on my own, which is usually what I do, just go and make it happen. I thought maybe I should include some people here and around the Greater Peterborough area in organizations to do this. We've got great people, great ideas, great workers, and I think I'd like to have just an unforgettable celebration for our country. So how do I do it with, you guys need to guide me in working with you, because I, like I said, I do things on my own, and I trudge along and do it, but I think maybe there's a little more to it this time.
Yeah, well, I think we've already got the bridge taken care of. We might have Grove Street and Main Street paved by then. More content out.
Isn't that enough cause for celebration? What about the library, Tyler?
Oh, of course the library. Well, this is, no, and thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention, because I don't know about you, but I read the news, you know. Every day I wake up to the news. I'm not so optimistic about our 250th anniversary, to be quite honest. So, yeah, let's get started. What do these guys, what can these guys do for you?
I'm out. I actually monitor another committee already.
So I'm not really looking for you guys to be part of the committee. I just, I want to get a blessing of some sort to go ahead and somehow, and I'm not trying to get on the roster of this town of Peterborough, I just want some kind of, when I approach individuals and companies and organizations to take part, I'd like some kind of approval. I don't know how to.
I wonder if the EDA might be a body that would be most helpful at this point.
I look to you for direction and suggestions.
I would strongly urge you, you know Megan Sewoco.
Uh-huh.
She's the chairman of the EDA, so maybe that's a conversation you could have with her. I know that Danica would be very interested in having conversations with you. You know Danica Malone, right?
Yes.
So that would be a good place to start, I would think. I'm just making that suggestion off the top of my head.
I never thought would just be a task force, you know, putting out a call for volunteers on a celebration task force, and we'd start working on, you know, putting a party plan together.
That's in 2026, right?
It's a little ways to go.
Much like winter, it'll creep right up.
Well, if you recall, the anniversary of the town, there was a committee, a large group of people that worked on it, but it was a number of years before that celebration that everything began. So, and there was a wonderful celebration, but it took a lot of work, a lot of time, and money. Just thought I'd add that in.
Well, I remember that celebration being a great success, so.
Correct.
If we pull another one like that off, I'm sure the town businesses would be more than happy to participate.
Yeah, it's a good, I think there's enough memory, and if not, I'm going to use the ledger's overview of the celebration of what we did and to say, you know, we need to do this and, you know, be a part of it. So I just see a really big participation, and I'm not saying the last, the town wasn't. I just see every town that is in the Greater Peterborough area to really come together differently, maybe than this year in our political environment, but in our, you know, in our region here, I think we should come together to celebrate. I think a lot of the little town things are great, but let's do a big, big, big hurrah. So that's kind of my goal.
Also, it might be interesting, I know the state passed a piece of legislation, I can't remember if it was this past session or the one before, that set up a commission to do exactly this on a statewide level, too. So I don't know if there's already members or if there's going to be a solicitation for members to that commission, but I'd be, I'm hoping to get a local representative involved there, too.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm hearing I should go to the EDA.
Check out the chamber, too, although that's a wider audience, but.
Yeah, so there's a local chamber group, absolutely, and Megan Sewoco was also on that, and I think you're involved in at least one of the subcommittees of that group. That's, you know, planning events right now, so.
Really, that's an easy, I didn't know if there was something more important that I needed to do, because it's, you know, it's a celebration of a higher level than, you know, the concerts in the park, or, you know, we're going to take you to Peterborough. So those are all great, but this has got a historical meaning and a historical perspective that I think will, our grandchildren should celebrate in looking back on.
Sure. And in 2014, the town's anniversary, there was a standing patriotic committee that was having involvement with doing that. Are there still members on that, or?
They have, many of them have aged out, unfortunately.
I was on that, that's to stand.
But there's still a budget, some of those.
There is still small budget, yeah, that we, so that's how we support Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
I heard budget, that's great.
Don't get too excited.
You weren't here for the DOT portion of tonight, where they told us they were going to spend our money, too, so.
Oh, we can all go stand on that bridge in 2026.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, budget, great thinking.
Everyone's going to put it on their calendar and be there.
2026, got it.
What are you doing then, huh? You have plans?
This is my favorite part of my work.
Who are you presenting these, one of these works?
That's all, Seth.
Welcome back.
Want to start with the grants or you want to start with your PowerPoint?
Why don't we just, these are not, you know, but a little refresher on them. So the town has received the $50,000 lead service grant from NHDES. I have my phone up here because I can read a narrative, but I think we'll make it a little clearer. But the new lead and copper rule under the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency requires community water systems to develop and submit to NHDES an inventory of service lines within the water systems distribution system by October 16th of 2024. This is, basically amounts to a funded mandate. We have no choice, we're already working on this project. We're working on developing and developing an inventory of all of the potential known sources of lead within the water distribution system. And NHDES, through working with the EPA, has provided us some financial support, because there is a level of boots-on-the-ground work that's going to need to happen for us to advance our efforts and get us to a point where we have a full inventory system. So that's what this is. I had presented on this previously, but we have been awarded the money, and that is the ask here tonight, to accept the money so we can continue our work.
Let me make a motion to accept that $50,000 for the lead grant from NHDES. One second. Would anybody like to stop us? All right, all those in favor?
Good. The next is to vote to accept the $10,580 recreational trails program grant from NHDNR C Division of Natural, what is it? I'm sorry, I'm getting. I had previously come to the board and asked for us to be allowed to apply for this grant. Danica Malone, our town planner, wrote a really wonderful grant and was able to secure us the money for the materials needed. This is a, as a reminder, we're planning to rehab the trail that goes from Scott Mitchell Road out to the Hancock Town Line, not making any functional changes to it. We're just rehardpacking it, using our public work staff to do the labor, and we're going to do it next spring. And through the trails program, we were able to get the cost of materials covered, so we're not hurting our operating budget from a materials position. So that's what this is. We've been successful, and Danica deserves a lot of credit for putting a really, really competitive grant together for us.
That's a very popular trail, so this is good.
Swift Corwin deserves some credit on this, and a gentleman by the name of Mike Lambert, who came to our meeting that night as well, who spent some time, worked with us. They sort of identified the project, got us focused, and helped us with some resources to get us more in touch. So kudos to them as well.
Was that your motion, too?
That was a motion to accept it.
Excellent, I'll second that. Well, those are very, great work for Danica, thank you.
All right. We're here with our monthly update on the fire station project. As you can see, our graphics changed. I've changed from our old fire station picture we've been using to our site concept, which has been pretty widely circulated around the community at this point. If you could go to the next slide. So we've had a number of meetings and done a number of things that are important towards the progress of the project since the last I was here, which was, I think, around 9:01 or so, end of August, or right beginning of the month last month. So I'll run through these real quick, just to let you sort of know what the committee's been working on and some of the key decisions and other sessions that have occurred. So on the 7th of September, the building committee met. They were presented with updated site schematics, floor plans, and a 3D model, which I have embedded in this PowerPoint, in case anyone watching or sees this meeting later wants to see that and hasn't seen it, which I'd be surprised at at this point, but I brought it. Resilient Buildings Group, sorry for the acronym here, is the subconsultant of the SMP Architects, who is working on energy modeling and helping us with sustainability options and making, helping us with a decision matrix, essentially working with our groups to help us make good decisions related to sustainability and our energy modeling. So they presented on a 9/7 meeting, too, for the building committee's consideration. On the 14th, were the community visioning sessions and listening sessions that were held at the Peterborough Public Library, there were two sessions that day. SMP and the project team presented progress so far, showed a site schematic at that point, floor plan layout, and the 3D model, and then asked, turned over the microphone to the community and asked for folks to give their impressions of where things have been at this point, or the work that had been done to this point. So that occurred on the 14th. On the 22nd, the architects, there was an architectural coordination meeting with our construction manager, with HCA, who's Hoyland Tanner, Aaron, who we just talked with, is a member of their staff, he's not working on this project, and then Mark McFarlane Johnson, who's a subconsultant structural engineer of SMP Architects. They started their kickoff, having moved far enough through their site and floor plan layouts to start talking and engaging with a little higher level of structural and civil engineering. They did their kickoff meeting a couple weeks ago. On the 27th, there was a sustainability session follow-up with the Resilient Buildings Group and the Peterborough Energy Committee, and that was mostly, the Peterborough Energy Committee had considered the Resilient Building Group model that had been provided to the team, and asked for their, and provided a lot of direct feedback, line by line, suggesting what they felt were the most important considerations for the project going forward. So we're talking about what kind of heating, solar considerations, net zero, what kind of R values for windows, what kind of materials could be used to make it a more economical building, energy-wise, and considerations of that mindset. On the 28th, we reconvened with the building committee. We talked about, we had a feedback session about the sessions that were held at the library on the 14th. We update, there was an update on the energy committee meeting with the Resilient Buildings Group from the architects, was sort of a reiteration of some of that, since many of our building committee members were not present at the meeting with the Peterborough Energy Committee, excuse me. We reviewed some options for building mechanical systems, HVAC and heating and things like that, with the building committee, giving them an understanding for what some of the options could be used for the development of the site and eventual final design. And Harvey provided us with a fairly high-level budget estimate at this point, based on where we are at in our program, and I'm pleased to say, depending on some key decisions coming down the pipeline, we are tracking fairly well on budget at this point. But again, that's 70,000 foot. We won't have real hard and fast numbers that can be backed up by a construction manager until we get a little further through the design process and into the town's budget process. And then just today, finished up some work on my own end, which was getting RFP together for geotechnical services, geotechnical meeting. We've got to do some soil samples at the Elm Street site for both our civil engineering and our structural engineering to inform site and floor plan considerations as we move into the next stage of the design development. And I had great responses so far from four firms that I directly solicited to, who are specialty, specialize in that field. So with any luck, we'll be getting that rolling very, very quickly, at which point, if you drive by Elm Street, you'll see at some point a large machine that is coring soil samples and helping us to understand what is below the surface, which influences the design. Next slide, please. Upcoming schedule, a couple of few things coming up. The next building committee meeting, which the public is encouraged to attend, will happen in this room at 10:00 AM on 10/19. And then the follow-up public input sessions, which is important, which is going to be basically the same that we did at the library last time with the architects, will be happening on the 26th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Similar to last time, the architects will show you what they've developed since the last session, the incorporation of ideas. We'll get to that, a little bit more on that in a second. And then, once again, turn the microphones over to the community and ask for the community to weigh in where we're at at this point, make sure we're still tracking in line with community expectation, and soliciting and utilizing community input. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, I brought the video, in case anyone hasn't seen it yet. This is a fairly high-level conceptual model, a 3D model of the progress so far and how the site is starting to take shape on Elm Street. This is the community center, and this is the current cold storage motor pool building, and this is where we park our cars often promoting at this point. This is obviously the new concept that we're developing. Fairly great feedback, I would say. I think I can go on record saying that at our visioning sessions. I think the team was encouraged, the architects were encouraged, the building committee was encouraged, that we got a lot of good, positive feedback from our community, suggesting that people felt they were listened to and that the design is more economized, it's reduced the square footage of the last iteration by a considerable amount. And a lot of the comments we've heard, both in those meetings, offline to building committee members, is a lot of favorable impressions of the compact nature of this design and how it's blending in well with the site. There is a lot of work to go still on this, but I, like I said, I'm comfortable stating that at this point, because we have gathered an awful lot of community input to get this far. And like I said, I think people in the project team are very encouraged by the progress so far. If you could do the next slide, please. All right, so one last note, and then I'll conclude my update. There's still an opportunity to weigh in on the design before the next session, which you can do by visiting peterboroughprojects.info or the town's website, which will take you to a new project portal page, which will give you a video recording of that presentation, where you can listen to the architects, and then you have a few dialogue boxes right below that video. For instance, if you couldn't make the meeting and you couldn't get on the microphone, you can write directly to the architects and the project building team and give us your feedback on that model, the floor plan and the site plan that you solved. And you have another week to do it, because we need to close the door at some point to give the architects some time to consider, and the building committee, consider the comments we've received. So that feedback's going to close on 10/7. And one last way, too, and the QR code on the postcard you probably received in the mail will also take you right to that site, and you're going to be looking for the virtual conceptual site design session. There's a little, scroll down the website, you'll find a section that obviously takes you to this video and gives you a number of questions to ask about where you think we're at in the design, and then asks you to type us some feedback. But I would highly encourage you to also plan on attending the session at the library and directly engage with the building committee and others. One more note on the project site. There's also an FAQ board. Maybe your question wasn't answered, maybe I asked a broad question that's not related directly to the design. You can search for ones that have already been asked, you can add your own, and someone from the team will respond to you. So engage, there's different ways to engage. This is not closing this coming week. The video's closing for comment in the coming week, but you can. The video's closing for comment in the coming week, but you can always go to the FAQ and ask questions and learn more about the project. Also, consider signing up for project-specific emails, which you'll find on just about every page on the project site. You type in your email, anytime an update happens, you will get an email specific to the project and not necessarily all other town business unless you want. Next slide, please. And then, other ways to learn about the project and engage directly with the project team. The building committee has put together a pamphlet called "The Citizen's Guide Planning for Peterborough's New Fire Station." They're in the lobby, they're in the clerk's office, they're downstairs in the planning office, Carl's carrying them around everywhere he goes, he told me earlier. It looks like this. They will also be, the building committee, members of the public on the building committee will be at the farmer's market on the 11th and the 18th from 3:00 to 6:00, with this pamphlet, with the site floor concept, and probably not the 3D model, but we'll have something for you to look at, and you can talk to members of the building committee who are appointed by the select board. At the peak in the Peterborough event coming up on the 14th, there is going to be a touch a truck event at the fire department. Building committee members will be there, same information will be available, and you can directly engage with members of the community that are working on this project from 10:00 to 2:00.
There'll also be free hot dogs there.
Yeah. I was going to say, there'll be hot dogs.
Yeah.
Albeit that one.
Yeah.
And if people without hot dogs are still interested in the present state of the current fire station, there's a good chance to ask any members of staff to show you around and see why we are on this endeavor at this point. Peterborough Recycling Center, building committee members will be there on the 21st from 10:00 to 2:00. Same stuff, pamphlet, talk to people, talk to your peers in the community who are not staff members who are working on this project, and give your feedback on where things are at, with people who are volunteering and giving a lot of time for an important project. Like I mentioned, the planning guide, there it is up there, and I'm holding one. Also, one-on-one, you can email me. A lot of people in this community do, you know how to get ahold of me, but if you don't, town's, my extension here of the town is extension 102, and simply my first name, at peterborough h dot com, please contact me, and I'd be happy to answer your questions and take your feedback, one-on-one, or meet with you. Call me, and I'd be happy to set that up. I think with that, voila. We'll be back next month.
Great report, sir. Thanks so much. Some information.
All right.
Up next, oh, Ally sent around the information with the Scott Farrar's pilot program.
Yeah.
Everybody get a chance to look at it.
I didn't.
Is that something we have to project, or?
No. If you reviewed it, do you have any questions about it?
Run on the menu.
Comfortable with it, town attorney's reviewed it, he's in support, Scott Farrar's very happy with it, so. As long as you're comfortable with it, you can make a motion to adopt the pilot agreement.
How long has the agreement been in place so far?
Oh, it's been, it's been many years.
Yes.
And I should, I should say that this pilot agreement that we're discussing, the terms of it have been in place for a very, very long time. There was just not a formal agreement in writing, so we wanted to set that right. Another state mandate that we're trying to, this goes along with the other updates that we're making with assessing, to get particularly the charitable, the conservation land, the parent use land, the elderly exemptions, the veteran exemptions, all the paperwork that DRA is going to be reviewing this year, making sure that everything is compliant with state's RSA's.
Would you care to just have a brief discussion of what payment in lieu of taxes is for anybody that may be checking out their first select board meeting online?
Sure. So payment in lieu of taxes or pilots are an agreement that an exempt organization can make with the town. In some cases, they are required to make those agreements with the town, as is the case with senior living communities, low-income housing communities that are exempt. And I believe the law states that they either need to make a payment that is the lower of 10% of rent collected, or the municipal portion of annual property taxes. The municipal portion of annual property taxes for those exempt properties is almost always going to be lower, so that's almost always what the agreement covers, as is the case with Scott Farrar. And this is a way for the town to recoup some tax revenue that would otherwise be lost if it was, you know, because of an exempt property is entirely exempt, they're not paying anything in taxes. Payment in lieu of taxes goes into the same pot that the municipal taxes collected from taxpaying residents and entities do. So.
The town still delivers services to its properties, so that's trying to defer the cost of that.
Exactly, yeah. The town's services are still valuable to the people who are living at those places and working in those organizations. So that's a brief synopsis on pilots.
Thank you.
Do I make a motion that we renew that pilot agreement with Scott Farrar?
All second. All right. Probably not any further discussion, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Great. Thanks for that work on that, Ally.
You're welcome.
I assume you'll also be giving us the update on the charitable exempt property, Mr.?
Yes. So this is a, as Nicole mentioned, this is part of the work we're doing in preparation for the DRA review. We had a 100% response rate from our exempt properties, and that includes religious, charitable, and educational regarding the BTLA forms A9 and A12. So BTLA, Board of Tax and Land Appeals for the State of New Hampshire. The state says that all exempt organizations have to turn this paperwork in every year, or they may not keep their exemption. The town is who they submit the paperwork to, but this is based on state RSA. So we hang on to those forms and then would provide them to the state, would provide any information affiliated with them, to them upon request, and that's one of the things that the state is going to be reviewing. So 100% of the exempt entities responded on time, which meant that we didn't have to remove any exemptions. However, I did reach out to all of our charitable organizations. Some of them have been exempt for many, many years, and I wanted to make sure that all the information in the file was up to date and current, and if there had been any changes, I wanted to make sure that they were still meeting all the requirements set forth by our guidelines for charitable exemption. So we, I sent those out to almost all of our charitable organizations, with the exception of a few that had very recently provided us with their information, such as Scott Farrar and the Kentucky Housing Trust, which just became exempt and is paying a pilot. So I'm currently reviewing all the responses that we've received, and if any of you would like to take a look at any of what was provided, then just let me know, and I'm happy to provide that.
How many organizations do we have?
The list of, so this was specific to charitables. Churches are exempt as well. There are many churches here in Peterborough, as we know, if you've ever been in Peterborough. And I don't know how many off the top of my head. For charitable exemptions, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. I think we have 13 that are charitably exempt, and then there's a couple educational exemptions as well.
And so the forms that you would provide us, if we wanted to see them, are the A9 and A12?
Yes. So A12s are required for charitable and educationally exempt properties. Churches do not have to provide an A12. Everyone has to provide an A9. A9s are considered public information, anyone is willing to request them. A12s, because we require that the organization provides financial information, those are not for public view, but the select board is welcome to review them. And then there was also a questionnaire that I sent out, asking them to explain how they still meet the charitable requirements. So that's the other piece that they turned in. And then, of course, we have the mission statement and articles of incorporation and all that kind of stuff, too.
Were you guided?
Oh, it sounds like thrilling reading.
Oh, yes.
Actually, I've gone through it, it's not bad.
Did you have guidance when you were putting this questionnaire together, or?
Yes, I used, so I used the questionnaire that has been used for a very long time. I inherited it, I guess. It was developed almost verbatim from the state law that governs these, so it's really very few deviations other than for clarity.
So it's not town-specific?
Not town-specific, it's statewide. These are statewide ones.
And if I recall, that all of these documents are due early April?
So the A9 is due by April 1st, or April 15th, excuse me. April 15th, and the A12 is due by June 1st. So the A12 is the one where, in addition to the form, we ask for the financial information as well.
Okay. Got to bring aside a few clues. Did anybody have any questions for Ally? All right.
And then Mariposa Museum's answer question.
Yep.
Okay.
Next, yeah.
Next one. All right, let me switch. So Journeys in Education, known as Mariposa Museum, applied for charitable tax exemption on their property on 26 Main Street, so that's the Mariposa Museum. They submitted the BTLA forms A9 and A12 as required with the application. They are a registered nonprofit, so they are on the list of the New Hampshire Department of Justice Registered Charitable Trust list, and that is the first thing we have to check when an organization is asking to be exempt. So we're told to check to make sure they are on the list and to check their standing. They do appear on the list, they are not currently in good standing. The list was last updated on September 19th, so it was a pretty recent update. So they're on the list, not in good standing. Some history, Mariposa received the exemption for a very long time, I think it goes back to 2004, but then that exemption was removed for the 2021 tax year, following noncompliance with RSA 7223C. And also, we hadn't received the pilot in several years. So there was noncompliance on a couple different fronts. So the charitable exemption was removed for 2021, and so tax bills started to be sent spring 2021. And there's also some complexity with the request regarding a second location that was opened in 2019 on Martha's Vineyard, the Oaks, Oak Bluffs, is that right? The Oak Bluffs location. So that location is rented, it's on Martha's Vineyard. Obviously, they're asking for us to exempt just the property that's here in town, but both museums share a budget in an EIN number, which makes it really difficult to isolate, you know, what's going where, and to confirm that all the items on that charitable checklist are being met. So there, and there was some back and forth, and Carla and Tina, you know, said that they could provide additional information. There's been nothing formal, like no tax information, specific to just the location here in Peterborough, and that is one of the things that we need for the A12. And I should, I should recognize that Carla, who's the executive director, was not able to make it, but she did say that some board members, are you our board members?
Yes, I am, yes.
Board members would be present. So, you know, unfortunately, though, there's no question about the mission of the Mariposa Museum being very admirable and very beneficial, because they're not in good standing with the state DOJ, and because I can't definitively answer the questions on the questionnaire pertaining to charitable status, I can't recommend approving it at this time. It's ultimately up to the board, but this is just based on the RSA's, based on the state laws, from an assessing standpoint. I can't recommend that the exemption is granted.
Two questions. One, how can they get, how can they get the state to get them in good standing? I mean, I would assume, maybe they need some advice on that, and is that something we can provide at the town? And the second is, when is the cutoff for this year for them?
April 1st and June 1st.
It was already hit that.
Well, and they, and they got their paperwork in for consideration for exemption for this tax year. So they got the paperwork in in time, but the information provided isn't specific or robust enough pertaining to the owned property here in town. And to answer your first question, it does say on the DOJ's page that there was a report that was due in, and this is public information, there was a report that was due in November of last year, from Journeys in Education to the state, that was not received. That report, it does not come through the town, so I'm not sure about the method of collection and the communication about that. But it says on the DOJ's website that it was required in order for the organization to be in good standing. It was due in November of last year, and it hasn't been received.
Right, so the paperwork was filled out in time for consideration in town, how long are they allowed to amend that questionnaire, amend that paperwork, to be in compliance if they were to take care of their business with the state?
That may be a question for Mary Beth, may be a question for the assessor.
Yeah, I think this would be very similar to last year's process, where if the select board were to choose to grant it, you know, the tax bill may go out for this year, but it could be abated.
Yeah.
If the selectmen choose to enter into a valid arrangement.
And so the information is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, exactly, but it's got to be, it's got to be done before the abatement deadline is reached, which is.
Which is March.
March.
March 1st.
March 1st.
We'd be operating outside of the law to grant it at this time?
No, not necessarily. It's, again, it's as a selectman's discretion to enter into it, or not, or to keep it open.
And they.
Well, what about all the other charitable nonprofits that have been in compliance all this time? What message are you sending them?
Well, so currently, Journeys in Education does not have a charitable exemption. Their charitable exemption lapsed two years ago.
Right.
So they are currently on the hook for full taxes unless they're able to secure an agreement with the select board. That agreement would not be retroactive to those tax years for which they do not qualify, so.
Well, not only do they not qualify for the pilot programs in those years because they're noncompliance, but they haven't paid any taxes in those years either, have they?
Correct, yeah. So there is still an outstanding full winnow due of almost $30,000.
May I ask a question? So let me know at what point I can ask a question.
So David Blair, you know, for the record.
Thank you.
Thanks. So it is true that Mariposa is not contesting that we owe taxes for 2021 and 2022. That's clear. I believe some payment has been made on them, but nowhere near the whole amount, you said.
I don't know, I just know what the outstanding amount is right now.
Okay, right, right. So that's our obligation to. So, that's our obligation to take care of that. We are hoping, however, that we can be reinstated as we were before as an exempt organization. And what I'm hearing is there are two things required. One is that we are again in good standing with the Department of Justice, and I'm familiar with that process. I think it's all on the website and can be done. At least that has to be negotiated with the Department of Justice, not with you. You have no, that's our obligation to straighten that out, and if good standing is returned to us, then the other thing you need is, you said more robust financial information. Now, we have, I believe you received our full financials for 2022.
P and L?
P and L, let's see, I have copies of them also. Both, yeah, the P and L and also the balance sheet. So, those are complete, and those are done by a local bookkeeper. And you may have received, I'm not sure, year-to-dates on, I know you've received year-to-date on Oak Bluffs, on the Martha's Vineyard gallery. I don't know if you've received year-to-date on the whole enterprise. Now, are you asking that expenses and income be divided by the two sites? Is that what is required? When you say, because our figures are correct, they all add up, but so when you said they're not, you need more robust, I'd just like to understand exactly what you need.
So, the, we did receive the year-to-date information for Oak Bluffs, and if we could receive that for Mariposa, that would be very helpful.
For 26 Main Street?
For here in town, yes.
Okay, okay, got it.
Because that's, that's the property.
Of course.
That we're considering. And I think the, so the tax information that was provided was, there was a little bit of confusion about what was going where, and in the questionnaire that I sent, Carla, she said that, like, they weren't split because it was, it was still being figured out in notebooks or something, so there was some ambiguity about what was going where.
Yeah, understood.
And so, we want to make sure that the numbers we have are specific to the property that's being considered.
That's very reasonable.
Yes.
That makes sense, sure.
Yeah.
That can be done, I believe, I mean, I'm not the bookkeeper, I think that because Carla's salary, for instance, is supported by, her salary is divided between the two sites. Certain expenses are obviously purely Peterborough or purely Oak Bluffs.
Yeah.
But there are some that are shared because we share one staff person, a director, and there may be others, perhaps website expenses are shared because the website covers both sites.
Okay.
So, okay, well, we will have to ask our bookkeeper to do that, to work, and we'll submit that. And what I understood you to say then is that the tax bill is issued, and we have the opportunity to apply for an abatement once we have provided you with proof of good standing and the financial information that you're asking for.
Yeah, and we've created a pilot agreement that the selectmen approve.
Okay.
So, it's, all of those things have to happen first before an abatement of the 2023 taxes would be considered.
Okay. So, we would need to come back to you with the two things you've already requested. You'd have to be satisfied with them, we would then create a pilot agreement, and then an abatement could be applied for.
For the, yes, for the current tax year, correct.
I understand that. Good.
Because if it happens.
Exactly. It's entirely, exactly, and again, entirely at the discretion of the board, you know, to feel that all of the information's been submitted, is accurate, you know, and is compliant with the state law, so.
Okay, of course.
And there is, you know, one of the things that's really pushing this is there's a fairly recent ETLA case where a town was essentially brought to task for granting charitable exemptions to entities that did not earn one, and so they were reprimanded. Not only was the town reprimanded, the charitable, the found non-charitable entity was also fined, two years' worth of full taxes in addition to losing their charitable exemption. So, we're trying very hard to avoid getting anyone into that kind of penalty situation.
Right. What's BTLA?
The Board of Tax and Land Appeals. They oversee all things assessing in the state of New Hampshire.
That's a terrible entity, isn't it?
Not terrible, no?
Didn't they just create?
At least 20 years. Probably much longer, I think. I think they've been around since the 80s.
I'm thinking about something else, you're right. Sorry.
I think you're thinking of the Housing Board of Appeals. That is very new, yes.
That's a couple of years old.
Yep.
Okay. Well, that's clear, thank you. We were not sure what steps we needed to go through in order to possibly satisfy you in arriving at a pilot agreement, so we appreciate it. For the record, Eric Bowman and Gloria Anderson are also here from the Mariposa Board.
Well, that says something because you waited through that whole entire meeting.
It is our pleasure. Totally our, this is really important to us. We acknowledge, we failed to open an envelope in time a couple of years ago and did not find the, all the information about the taxes and what we needed to do in time to reclaim our exemption. And so, we are on the hook for a lot of money that is very, very difficult for us to pay, but we don't hold you accountable for that. That was our oversight, but we really, really want to get back in the good graces of property exemption so that we don't have to continue accruing expenses just kind of crushing us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
What's the deadline to get all of these ducks in a row and then come back for a write-up of the pilot agreement?
So, the, the application for the abatement is March 1st.
To help me back up from there, we really would want to have an agreement before the select board by the end of this year.
Oh, yeah.
So, my recommendation would be to reach out to the state as soon as possible to see what can be done to rectify the standing, because that, like, the split locations was kind of throwing me for a loop, but I was like, okay, maybe, you know, we just need some more information, and I was still trying to wrap my head around that, and I thought, I need to recheck that list, because initially, when Carla had contacted us about this, I had checked, you're on the list, you're in good standing, and when I rechecked, not in good standing, and I was like, oh.
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 Yes.
So, if that can be resolved, that would be enormously helpful.
Enormously important to us in more than just this way. We were frankly not aware that this was missing, so this will be dealt with, we hope, successfully. I also just want to say a word, we have been struggling to make it in Peterborough, in the Manadina region alone, and we expanded to Oak Bluffs, hoping that, first of all, it furthers our mission, it exposes, brings our mission to far more people than can see it here, and it also brings people here who go to Martha's Vineyard in the summer. Ultimately, that gallery, which is seasonal, it's open for two or three months, may begin to generate enough income to really help us here, but it's not doing that right now. It is just barely breaking even, and right now, we're actually with, as you will see from the financials that we sent the year-to-date from Oak Bluffs, we're actually in some deficit because of payables. Not much. We're almost there, and perhaps we'll get enough income still coming in this season in Oak Bluffs to help us to balance the payment there. I just want, in case, we all know that Martha's Vineyard is a very wealthy place, a lot of very wealthy people spend time there. I don't want, I hope the select board trusts the figures we've given you to know that this is not a cash cow for us. We're just breaking even there, we're just about breaking even here, and we would like to do better than that so that we can be here for years to come, and we really appreciate the time that you've given us tonight, and the clear direction you've given us as to what we need to do to get ourselves back in good standing, so thank you.
You're very welcome. And if you have any questions that I can assist with during this process, please don't hesitate to let me know.
Believe me, we won't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ollie. Thanks, David.
Sure.
All right. Last business, we have some minutes from September 5th, and I would make a motion to be accepted.
I'll say that.
Thanks again, Ollie. All those in favor?
I didn't get to vote, I wasn't there.
No? We noticed.
Right. Still goes in session right there. That's it for tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
See how it is. All right.
softer chairs.
On the dock.